Good evening, the time is 7:00 PM and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on January 4th. Has everyone been able to review those minutes?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion we approve those minutes?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both, any errors, changes, or omissions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion passes. All right, the next item is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. I do have a change from the agenda that was originally distributed to you. Under new business, we have a new item A, and this is solar project at transfer station. And we will be setting a public hearing and a special town meeting date, potentially today. And outside of that, everything else will move on down. So the resolution for the extended producer responsibility will be item B, and so forth and so on. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstention, motion carries. Very great. I don't have anything under communications and correspondence for you this evening, so we can move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience? John, did you want to talk now, or do you want to talk?
Whatever, whatever is appropriate.
Well, you're welcome to talk now, but we do have that resolution on the agenda, do you want to talk?
That's what I'm trying to talk about, but I thought I was required to talk during public comment, if I'm not, I can wait.
You could, yeah, we'll have you talk after, if you, yeah, if you don't mind, yeah. I mean, unless you, if you have to leave, or anything, okay, okay, thank you. Is there anybody else? Nothing in the chat? Okay, we'll move on to old business. Our monthly report from the Committee on Solidarity. I know we will have someone from the Committee on Solidarity, Shelley Nolan will be here, but she is going to be running a little late, so we'll have her speak under the second public comment later in the meeting. So we can move on to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions?
We have none.
None.
Okay, we'll move on to solar project at the transfer station, our consultants. Alan Savins is here, and Rob Clea, Robert Clea is here as well, thank you guys. Come on up.
Hi, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, thank you to the First Selectmen Curly and the rest of the Board of Selectmen for having us today to present results of our Portland landfill, RFP. If you recall, I was here, gosh, a few months ago now, where we had a really wonderful discussion about the strategy for this RFP, and the goal of that RFP is really go to the market and see what is possible on the landfill for solar development, and really look to the marketplace with two potential pathways. If you could go to the next slide.
Oh, okay, next slide, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to walk through the results of our RFP and then the next steps after your hopeful vote this evening. But when I was, last year, we talked about there were these two large state incentive programs, one called the Shared Clean Energy Facilities Program, the SCF program, which had some challenges about the slopes of the landfill and some extra requirements there, and the non-residential program and virtual net metering, where you get to save money on your electric bills from the solar array, which didn't have as strict requirements on the slopes of the solar array. We went out to the markets and said, here are two paths, and the marketplace said, yeah, we like the non-presidential path much better. So it was very clear when the bids came in, we got a robust set of bids, which Alan will go over, that the bids for that non-residential program with virtual net metering, where you're going to be saving money on all your electric bills, were stronger. A disclaimer, which is on the slide, is that the presentation we're giving today, our forecast projections and predictive statements that are the RFP bidders' projections, so they should be taken with that in mind, though we do, as part of our process, review them for accuracy in terms of their productions, and we review their assumptions that they're making. So, but still, we want to make sure that that's, in your minds, that these are projected savings over the next 20 years. The second thing is, we are not showing confidential bid information in this public meeting, particularly because, remember, this is our process in Portland to select a bidder who is then going to work with Portland and participate in that competitive future incentive program. So it's essential that that future bid, when they're up against solar arrays all over EverSource territory, that we don't reveal confidential information that would impact that future bid process. So I will be here to police that, make sure that doesn't. So, next slide, and I will pass it over to Alan for the RFP results.
Thanks, Rob. Can you go to the next, yep, perfect. So, as you'll see here, we received a total of five bids from the bidder group. Some, all of them bid on virtual net metering. A couple of them chose to bid on both, the shared clean energy as well as VNM, but we received five total in VNM, if you can go to the next slide, please. And here, we wanted to illustrate, I'm actually gonna, is it okay if I step away from the?
Yeah, if you want to take the mic with you.
So, what we did here was, we have, oh, thanks. What we did here was, we put the conceptual designs from each one of those bidders here, and we've highlighted down here in a table, as you can hopefully see here, it's color-coded. Minimal concern is green, yellow is potential, red is max, and NA is not applicable. So we'll just go very quickly across the table. So, one of the important factors here is, based on the conceptual design presented by the bidder, we want to take into consideration the actual viability of the project moving forward, which again, to Rob's point earlier, takes into account things like slope. There are, there's a certain configuration at the landfill, just to take note, like here is a, basically a waterway where runoff runs through the landfill. So we're taking things like that into account, as well as the overall slope around the landfill itself. So we just want to highlight here that of the submissions that came in, we identified at least a couple right off of the bat that didn't take into account the waterway. So we flagged that as a red, as a potential issue down the road, as well as a design like this one here, which really maximized every inch of the landfill. And we saw that as a red flag, because chances are, from an engineering standpoint, that would need to be redesigned and scaled back. And then there were yellows, just because there were some slight concerns. Nothing that was really hair-raising, but we saw as a potential issue down the road. And then importantly for saving, for the town of Portland, where the overall savings forecast came in. So you'll notice, you know, red came here, the yellows are here to the right, as well as here, where these folks just didn't offer a robust package to the town of Portland. And then, from a technical standpoint, to Rob's earlier point, there were some production measures and some design measures that we just didn't feel would really withstand what they proposed when it actually came to installing the project. And then I don't want to steal anything from Rob, but I can maybe hit the high note that there were really no glaring issues of four of the bidders. And then there was one, which is this group here, Vergey. They just simply didn't say anything, they were silent on the whole thing. So that raised the flag for us as well, as a potential risk factor down the road. So, this is meant to give more of an illustrative overview of what we saw and what we received and what we reviewed. Just want to highlight that you'll start to notice on the Green Skies submission, which is this one here, there were greens all the way across, we really didn't see any issues with the design. You'll see in a moment, the savings forecast is strong. We like their technical approach, and they didn't seem to be any sort of legal issues or concerns. If you can go to the next slide, please. So given that, we went ahead and created a shortlist of the five down to two, one of them being Amoresco, and the other being Green Skies, a clean focus company. And again, what we did was, we brought that color scale down and also incorporated some notes as well. So the Amoresco bid that came in, so again, the read, we foresee a redesign of the system based on their approach, based on their design. In the Green Sky scenario, they opted for a much tighter and smaller footprint of a project, very well taking into consideration the channelway, as well as any of the applicable slope areas. So, really, that stood out to us the most. And then secondarily, is the forecasted lifetime savings. So Amoresco, as you would imagine, they're the largest project or the system, so they're going to inherently be one of the higher savings scenarios. But again, based on the theory that they would have to do a redesign, this will very likely come down. As opposed to the smaller, tighter footprint here, we foresee this saving scenario, although less, will end up withstanding the test of time and through the development of the project. And then lastly, one thing we just want to call out is, off of the property up around here is where the project would actually tie into the utility with EverSource. With Amoresco, they actually size greater than the capacity at the circuit. So we also foresee additional cost to upgrade that line in order to accept this much power. And it's very likely, although not written, that whatever that cost is will likely get charged back to the project, and ultimately, again, hamper this benefit. As opposed to this approach, which again, here it references, the size is in accordance and actually less than the grid capacity at the circuit level. So we feel as though this number will have a higher threshold to withstand any of the costs that may come in. Rob, I don't know if you have anything on the legal side? Great. You can go to the next slide, please.
Okay.
Not quite, thank you. Perfect, that one there. Thank you. So again, you know, this is the illustration from Green Skies. This is our recommendation for award, based on everything that I had just outlined. Again, bringing everything back to one table. Green Skies as a company has done several of these types of landfill projects all over the state, so we don't see any sort of project risk in that regard. Again, we like and appreciate their approach to taking into account the circuit capacity, the slopes on the site, as well as contracting the system into a smaller size to maximize the incentive, which then drives the overall benefits of Portland. So their forecasted year-one savings estimate is around $100,000. And then over the course of 20 years, which is the program's or the project's life, their estimated savings is around $2 million. I'll set here, I'll give it back to Rob.
And we just have a couple more slides, but then we want to open it up to your questions. If we can go just to the next one. I'd like to sort of close by recognizing where we are in the process. We've administered the RFP, we've come to you for this decision point. After your decision, if it's favorable to go ahead with Green Skies, we would have the, the public meeting and special town meeting necessary for this long-term use of your landfill property. Our goal is to actually have that at your next, right before your next Board of Selectmen meeting on February 1st. All recognizing this hard date that's coming up in mid-March, that March 14th date, that's when the non-residential virtual net metering EverSource program requires all of its bids submitted into that program by 1:00 on that date. So once we have all the town approvals, our next step will be to work with the selected bidder to make sure their bid package is all it organized, and that the First Selectmen on behalf of the town is signing the option agreement for them to demonstrate that they have site control, as well as affidavits to that same effect. Those are all in the resolution that you'll be presenting, you'll hopefully be passing today, and will be presented at that town meeting, all of the sort of necessary town legal steps to authorize going forward with this partner into that competitive bid process that is due March 14th. Remember, I always come here and say, there is obviously, that is a competitive process. This will be bids competing against other bids around EverSource territory. So our goal in this process and throughout is to strike that right balance with the financial benefits to the town and a competent bidder with a design that can be built, but also that with an eye towards them being competitive in that competitive bid process, and hopefully having a bid that is in the winner's circle and not outside of it, so you actually get a project that goes forward. And then, last slide, is that sort of look at today's date. So we, our RFP was way back in November when we released it. From the 18th onward, going through the issuing notices, having the public hearing, having that license, that option agreement executed, and then working with the selected contractor to get into the program. So that's our last slide, and we were happy to, actually, Alan, there was anything else?
No.
Okay, great, so we're happy to take any questions you might have.
You said that, was it March 14th is the deadline to get this in, and it looks like you've done your due diligence to try to find the best-balanced contractor. But you had mentioned earlier, was that the one that has done similar projects in other landfills across the state, you said?
That's right.
Have they been before in, through this same process again? I guess what I'm saying is, would another benefit for us to using them be that this state entity recognizes them and they've done good work elsewhere already, or?
So I would say, the state would recognize them, but there's no real benefit in terms of the award itself. The award is really just the bid price, and does the project qualify for the program? So on the merits of the project itself, are all of the papers in order, are all the signatures in place?
So even if they know them, they can't let that influence their decision?
Yeah, no, that, that competitive process, it's literally an Excel spreadsheet that has them organized by bid price. Now, it is a landfill, so you do get that 20% bid preference that helps move, you know, them up and down that Excel spreadsheet, but, it's a good question of, but the other parts, their professionalism, their financial capabilities, the fact that they've built a whole bunch of landfill, including in Connecticut, that all speaks to their ability to go through the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, stormwater permitting processes, and all the other sorts of things that, once they have the incentive secured, is just the beginning. It's also just our beginning, where we are your project management and owner's rep team going forward, helping them go through all of those processes, including with DEEP and others related to the landfill and that, they are well-respected and well-known, and local. Actually, they're also a North Aiden company.
With their other projects, have they been close to their projections?
They have. So one of the projects in particular is the Fairfield landfill that they completed, probably almost 10 years ago at this point, and they're an active referral for them. And Fairfield has said nothing but great things of their experience, as well as they forecast a benefit and what they've been able to realize.
They also are responsible for ongoing maintenance as well. So their, their incentives are to make sure that array is operating and producing money, because that's producing power, sorry, because that translates to money that flows to them.
You mentioned that, that they were a conservative, you know, it was conservative how much power they could generate from there, their footprint's minimum. Is it possible that they could produce more power? If they look at the design and they feel they can expand it, because that would be a benefit to the town, of course. Is that a possibility, or does it end when we improve this? Like, that locks in?
It will be locked in once they secure the incentive.
Right.
So, the utility company speaks in AC, KWAC, that's the way the utility thinks. So when they submit that incentive and secure the size, that becomes the size that is available to the site.
And how is the final determination made on how big or small the system is? I know they, that's their best estimate, but how does that modify, or how was the process for that?
So, there are a series of buckets within the incentive itself. So there are categories within the incentive which are small, medium, and large. And what Green Skies did here was, in their conservative design, they scaled back in order to fit into the medium category, and that medium category has a higher incentive than the large. The other four proposed the large.
Okay.
So what they ended up doing was maximizing that medium scenario and the incentive, and sharing a portion of that greater than what the others were proposing in the large.
So it maximizes our chance of getting it, since it's a smaller universe we're bidding against, or?
And a more lucrative pool, the medium pool. Now, they're, they're bidding, also to your original question, they're, that medium pool goes up to 1 megawatt or 1,000 kilowatt AC, so they're bidding pretty close to that maximum of the medium size. The other things, if you don't ask the lawyer, this are technical. On that site, the number of inverters and pieces and parts will also just sort of dictate, why is it 950 kilowatts versus 970 kilowatts, et cetera? Those are all on the technical side.
And the size of it doesn't require an upgrade of the power lines coming into that area, right?
We don't forecast it now, so we looked at the circuit capacity map, which was updated in January 23. Their design is less than that capacity cap, the others, the other designs were greater.
By the guy, awesome, just checking the boxes, thank you, Rob.
That's right, that's right.
You've answered my question, I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions? Good. So, First Selectmen Curly, is there, we're happy to step down and leave it to you on the process side.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I just want to thank, thank you both for your due diligence and work on this. I, I'm thrilled with it, I really am, I think, I think we have a good shot at, at getting it, and I want to thank Andy, Bauer, who was here as well for his work in the Clean Energy Task Force. Right? It's a 7:00 start time, it threw you off, right?
I think we're doing it, I know that.
But no, thank you guys, I think we'll, we'll take it from here and go on, so thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Rob, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
So, question for the board is, if you agree with, and I, I agree with Alan and Rob as well, that Green Sky seems to be the best, the best bet for the town, and the most lucrative option for the town, should, should we be awarded. So, with that, we would need to schedule a public hearing and a special town meeting. And so I have both of those here in your packets. So we would like to do the public hearing at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, February 1st. That's before our 7:00 regular meeting. And then the special town meeting would be at 6:45. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay.
Do I, mark the motion for both, or just for?
Well, you can do the, actually, do one at a time, so we'll do the public hearing.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we do the public hearing at, on February, oh, I have to make it up to one.
February 1st.
All right, legal notice of public hearing, Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 6:30. Pursuant to Section 503-F and 506 of the Town Charter and Section 7-63, 163-E of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Portland Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 6:30 in the Buck Foreman Community Center, to consider public comments and questions, both orally and in writing, on the proposed use of the Portland landfill located at 39 Sand Hill Road, the landfill for the development of a commercial-scale solar photovoltaic array. The public hearing will be followed by a special town meeting to consider and vote upon whether to enter into a binding option agreement with Green Skies, Clean Focus, quote, Green Skies, and execute all necessary documents, including a lease with Green Skies, necessary for the development of the solar project. A copy of the proposed special town meeting resolution is available for public inspection on file in the town clerk's office or online at www-portlandct.org, dated this 18th day of January 2023.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Ralph. Although, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? And then if you want to do this other one, you can waive the reading.
I'd like to waive the reading.
I'll, I'll second the motion that you waived the reading.
Well, can you read, but, yeah, still have to read.
He's got to make a motion of some sort.
All right. Let's see. Legal notice of special time, Wednesday, February first at six forty-five. Will be another meeting here. I'd like to waive the reading.
Okay. And John, second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, guys. The next up, the next item on tonight's agenda under new business is a resolution that's also in your packet. Now, this resolution was brought to me a month or so ago by Portland resident John Hall, who's here. And this is on supporting an extended producer responsibility legislation. And John, thank you for, for waiting here. Would you like to come up and, and talk to the board about this and what this resolution does?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just start by introducing myself again to you. I, I've been here before, but it was quite a while ago. I'm John Hall. I'm a resident of Portland, also the director of the Jonah Center for Earth and Art, which is an environmental nonprofit. We got started in Middletown, but now I live in Portland. That's, that's our headquarters. And we do a lot of things, tree planting and, and water chestnut removal from the river. But related to my being here, we are also advocates for legislation in the Connecticut General Assembly, in particular, legislation that benefits municipalities. I was interested in, during the, the presentation on the solar project, because one of our projects last year was to double the amount of non-residential solar that could be installed in a certain year from seventy-five megawatts per year to one hundred and fifty megawatts per year. So as a result of that, the, your, your, the, the numbers of, of bids that can get proved has doubled as a result of that, that legislation. But I'm here to talk about extended producer responsibility. And I'll just begin by saying, that's a kind of a technical term, but we're all really familiar with extended producer responsibility in this sense. If you buy paint and you have leftover paint, you can take that to a paint store and they dispose of it properly. And the reason that you can do that is because a law was passed, EPR for paint. The paint manufacturer pays into a fund that supports the facilities necessary to recycle or dispose of paint. So that's one example. Or if you have a computer that's, you know, out of day, you need to replace it, you can take that computer to a recycling event for, for technical products, or you can take it to a municipal site. And the cost, the cost of the, of properly getting the metals and so on out of that computer have been paid for in the price of the product. So now we're here talking about extended producer responsibility for packaging and printed paper. But printed paper is just kind of an add-on. It's really about packaging. And this, this is a little more complicated because packaging, it comes in all forms. I mean, there's just all kinds of, of packaging, different kinds of plastics, different kinds of plastics layered together, plastic bonded to paper. All of this makes it very difficult, almost impossible actually, to recycle packaging. And this, this EPR law for packaging is a way to address that problem. Now, I, I, I feel that you will be receptive to this, or you are receptive to this because the, the municipalities are now very much burdened with the difficulty of recycling packaging material. I don't know what it is in Portland or how much you deal with it, because I know you have private waste tollers here in Portland. We do too at our home. But in, in Middletown, for example, to say five or ten years ago, the, the city was paying about fifty dollars a ton to dispose of municipal solid waste, basically the trash. And they were able to sell the recyclables, the single-stream recyclables. They would get some revenue from the sale of that. And now, for all kinds of reasons I won't go into, at least in Middletown, now, Middletown is paying more to, to dispose of their recyclables than they are their trash. And, and both have gone up. Middletown right now, or at least in December, is paying about ninety-four dollars a ton for regular trash and ninety-seven dollars a ton for recyclables. And one of the hazards of that price difference is it really gives the haulers an incentive to take the trash and put it in with the recycling. As you can see, that's a, a temptation the recyclers might have. Not, not to accuse any, any private hauler of doing that, but it is a temptation. So this, municipalities really stand to benefit from this program, which will create incentives in the marketplace for producers of packaging to make their packaging more uniform, make it more recyclable, and to, to support the facilities that are necessary to separate and, and recycle that plastic. Primarily, plastic is, is the biggest problem. Right now, only about, the estimates vary, but only six to nine percent of the plastic that is turned in as, into a recycling center is recycled. It, most of it gets either burned or exported or landfilled, exported to a foreign country. Maybe in Asia, it ends up getting burned there or thrown in the ocean. It, it, it's, we're, we're really, we have a huge plastic pollution problem in the world with the health consequences that go along with that, because there are a lot of toxic chemicals that are a part of a plastic product. So this resolution that you have has been approved by Middletown some months ago. I can't tell you the other municipalities that are, that have passed it, but I know it's being passed by a, a group of municipalities in the Houston River Valley. It's being considered by Guilford and Madison, a joint resolution. And the reason I'm trying to get other towns, like my own town, to pass a resolution is because this is really controversial legislation. It's controversial, it's being opposed by the haulers, the trash haulers, who are going to lose control over how this stuff gets dealt with, because it's going to be standardized and there's going to be a system. So they're, they're opposed to this. Also, some really disappointing sort of far-out environmental groups that are really focused on plastic are, are opposing this legislation because it's not, not strong enough. It doesn't do everything we'd like to do to eliminate plastic pollution. So we need municipal leaders, in this case, Mr. Curly, to testify, to submit written testimony or in-person testimony in support of this. It's really municipalities that are really behind this. And if it gets across the finish line in the legislatures, it really needs to be municipalities that do that. So I, I don't want to go on and on here. I'm not an expert on this. I've learned a lot in the last couple of months. But if you have any questions about this or would like to know more about anything I've just mentioned, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? You guys are, you guys are easy tonight, huh? Thank you, John. So what's everyone's thoughts on this proposed resolution before you?
Well, I think anything that we can do to encourage the reduction of stuff being produced that has to be spent money on to get rid of and anything that's harming the environment, I, I would prefer to see us do whatever we can to try to, to help with these. That's my thoughts.
Ryan, John had mentioned the Middletown numbers, for example, where the cost to get rid of recyclables is actually more than the cost to get rid of garbage. Do you know what we're currently paying?
I, I do. I don't want to, I, I believe I do, but I don't want to say it because.
Are we in the same neighborhood?
So we, if you recall, we locked in last, yet last year with Murphy Road Recycling for our single-stream and our recyclable, our single-stream recyclable and our bulky waste. We got a, a pretty good deal on our bulky waste, and I think our recyclables are, were very good as well. I don't want to compare them to Middletown without, you know, being sure. So I don't want to quote the numbers that I have in my head, but, but we're better. I know that we're a lot better than, than, at least for recycling. I think Middletown has its beat on the, the bulky waste, but our recycling is much lower. Yeah, with, as you recall, with, with Mira, the Mira plant closing in Hartford, this is, this is the effects of, and we're actually in, in much better shape than a lot of, of our neighboring towns in Middlesex County because we had that deal with Murphy Road Recycling last year. So that was a, a very big benefit to the town of Portland. Would someone like to make this motion?
Do we have to read the question?
I think you should, yeah.
Why isn't he up for reading this?
Bob will read it. No, I do the tax reading.
He's right about that.
I guess I'm reading. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. A resolution declaring the support for a State of Connecticut Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR, law for packaging. Whereas communities in Connecticut and across the nation are struggling to manage the rising cost of recycling programs, and whereas producers of packaging have little incentive to design packaging to minimize waste, reduce toxicity, or ma, or maximize recyclability, and there is no organized coordination between the producers of packaging and municipalities that are responsible for disposing of or recycling the packaging. And whereas producers of packaging have taken some or all responsibility for the management of post-consumer packaging in Europe and Canada, and as a result, have greatly increased recycling rates and infrastructure investment, created jobs, and reduced taxpayer costs. And whereas, after two thousand seventeen, when China changed its import policies to severely restrict the amount of contaminated and poorly sorted plastics it would accept, the US began shipping plastics to parts of Southeast Asia and Africa with poor infrastructure. And whereas, Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR, is a strategy that requires the manufacturers to assume financial responsibility for the end-of-life management of their package and is currently used for e-waste, paint, and mattresses, saving municipalities in Connecticut millions of dollars in recycling cost. Whereas, EPR legislation for packaging will level the playing field for manufacturers and require manufacturers to assume the cost of collection, transportation, and processing of recyclables, saving the town of Portland and its residents thousands of dollars. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Portland Board of Selectmen hereby approves to support federal and state passage of legislation for extended producer responsibility for all forms of packaging, encourage, and encourage continued discussions with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to ensure that this legislation represents the best interest of the town of Portland and their residents. And witness whereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of town of fixed January. In the year two thousand twenty-three, Brian J. Curly, First Selectman.
Thank you, Sean.
Town of Portland.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ralph. Any discussion on this? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I think the only thing I'd say is obviously, I, plastic is incredibly bad thing to the environment. But, you know, again, you have to start someplace and we need to work on it. It, I think eventually there's going to be enough pushing on those that produce things with plastics. They're going to have no choice because the damage to the environment is incredible. The, the stories you hear, you know, just go out and look at that big blob flowing around the Pacific Ocean. I, I mean, so I think this is a good, good way to at least drive in that direction.
Thank you, Ralph. Call for the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you, John. And just, John, to answer your question, I pulled up our contract with Murphy Road. We did, and this is what I thought, we, we actually have, there's no charge for us for single-stream recyclables. And this year, we're paying one hundred and ten a, a ton for, for the single stream. Thanks, guys.
What was that, Ryan? It was a hundred and ten for bulk, for bulky?
For bulky waste, excuse me. Bulky waste is one ten for this year and zero for our single-stream recyclables, which is, as John said, I think that's a good deal for Portland, so.
That's a very good deal.
Yeah.
What do you like contract?
Plus a good deal.
Um, two thousand twenty-seven. Yeah, that's pretty good. So there are some rate increases to the bulky waste, but the single stream stays the same. All right. Can move on to school facilities update. And Lou Pear is with us this evening. Lou is the chair of the committee. Lou, would you like to come up and address the board? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Kevin. So the first thing on the agenda, and thank you for allowing me to speak, is that we're asking for an extension of our committee. Our committee works very hard. But the Board of Selectmen, and, and Ryan brought us to our attention, that the Board of Selectmen said we could continue our committee, I think, up until November. And then we got busy working and that we forgot about that deadline. So this is really just a procedural thing. We're kind of asking the Board of Selectmen to allow us to continue to work. And we're hoping that we'll get to a, a plan by the spring. We're getting close. We've looked at maybe ten or twelve different options of how we're going to improve the facilities or improve the economics to the facilities that we have in the town. And then we'll see where we can go from there. Hopefully, we'll have a plan to you April, May. We're asking to see if you would let us work at least till June or up till June. If we have a plan before then, that's fine. When we're doing things like this with the state and there's reimbursement with the state, there are, are maybe some hoops you have to go through. So we're now speaking with the Department of Administrative Services. And they're the, they're the group that provide or allow the Bond and Commission dollars to a town for a new school or a renovation or an extension. So we've met once with the Department of Administrative Services, explained what we want to do. We're meeting next, next month, February, with the Director of the Department of Administrative Services. We have a question that we want to propose because there is precedent within the state where the square footage, and there's a square footage formula that determines the amount of reimbursement. So if you have a high number of students in a small square footage of, of buildings, your reimbursement rate is higher. If you have lots of space and you have a low number of students, your reimbursement rate goes down. So we have that situation. We have three elementary schools, and we have a, an elementary or intermediate school that is large. It was a high school at one time, Brownstone. And there's, one whole floor of that building is not being used for students. So our question to the state is, if in fact that part of the building is not being used for students, could we reduce that square footage in the formula to decide what the reimbursement rate would be? So it's, it's a fair question. Our, our consultants have asked us to do this. And the amazing part about it, and, and Mike and Bob, you know, they're on our committee, they know about this, is that when you reduce the square footage just for that. when you reduce the square footage just for that, you would reas- you'd reduce the cost to the town by about ten million dollars. I mean, that's just the case, which is nice. Uh, so we're trying to be fiscally responsible and we're also trying to make sure that we're educationally sound. So the first thing I think I need for you to do is if, if you will, uh, is allow us to keep working.
So what's your date? What do you want to give us as a date?
I, I'm going to say up to June first. And if, let's say, we go to the state and they say, well, you have to go to the legislature, you know, maybe there's some more steps, we'll come back.
When's the legislative session end? Uh, would it be this session that we would go?
Well, it's possible. It's possible that we could get it, you know, get going. Hopefully by February, when we present this to the, the Director of, uh, Administrative Services, he may say to us, well, now you have to go to Christie and Norm and they need to talk to the Bond and Commission to talk about this plan. And if in fact this plan is viable, then maybe during this legislative session, it could, it could be passed.
When's your meet- when, when is that meeting?
We're meeting February ninth.
I'd like to attend if I can.
Okay, it's a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Who's the Director of DAS now?
Uh, Doug, Douglas? Douglas. Uh, I forget his first name. But, uh, he's, he's the, we're meeting with him on the ninth.
So I'll make a motion to extend the work, the, the date that the School Facility Study Committee can work to until at least June first.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. It's easy, huh?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lou.
Thanks, Lou. Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to item D under new business is refunds of excess payments.
I'll step up.
Motion for refund of excess payments, Justin M. Dixon, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, Daimler Trust, three hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for refund of excess payment, JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A., five hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next up, under Status and Committee Reports, I don't have too much to report. Uh, I know that the Brownstone Avenue project is, is, is back underway today. They're, uh, finishing up uh, the remediation work down there. So if you see, uh, and then bringing in that clean fill, that's, uh, they took a little break for the holidays and, and then lining up the, uh, the trucks and all that, take, took a little time. But, but they're back working, which is good. Um, and it's another update for you. I can't remember, so if somebody's. Brainer Place, uh, Elmcrest, uh, um, I do have to talk with, uh, Dan Bertram. I know that, uh, there was a, there was a debate over whether or not they were going to have a retaining wall or whether they weren't going to have a retaining wall. And that, that was kind of one of the things that were, was holding up the, the design of, uh, Building E, but I think they ultimately just decided, uh, on a retaining wall so that they, they will be putting that in. Um, and, but they're, they're still working. The plans are with the IC- ICC. They should be back, uh, relatively soon. Uh, a tarp did blow off the Hart Jarvis building. The, uh, they lost their blue tarp. So I know our land use office is working, um, uh, our building official is working with them on, on, uh, making sure that the roof of the Hart Jarvis is secure and watertight because we want to make sure that, uh, these buildings are, you know, preserved, you know, before they can be, uh, uh, remediated and restored, I should say. So trying to think, there was another project I felt like I wanted to update on, but I can't think of Riverfront?
GZA project?
Oh, that was it, Dave. There was GZA. We had a meeting with, uh, with, uh, Rich DeRozier with GZA this morning. And GZA is getting very close to, um, they're going to be out on Tuesday of next week doing some, uh, geophysical, uh, surveys of, uh, they have four properties in mind currently. And we're also looking into two additional potential properties in town. And so, um, basically they're looking to, to get as much data as they can so that we can be, uh, very careful with where we drill just because of the cost of drilling. And there's a lot of options for, for our water potential and our water future in town. And, and we're getting closer every, every step of the way. So Tuesday will get us, uh, much further along, I think. And further to that, to that test well phase, which we're, I know we're all looking forward to, so.
Based upon the way you explained the process at one of our former meetings, the weather's on our side on this.
Exactly, yeah. And that's exactly why they can do this on Tuesdays, because the ground is not frozen. Yeah, you're exactly right, John. So, so that's some good news I wanted to share, so thank you. And that's it. That's all I got today. Well?
Okay, um, I'll start with Park and Rec. With regards to Park and Rec, um, the last meeting, they spent some more time talking about the, uh, permit and the policy around, um, using, uh, putting up sponsors, uh, signs at the, at the parks. And at the, for now, the Riverfront Park specifically is what they're talking about. And, um, they're going to continue that. They're actually going to have a special meeting next Monday to, uh, try to firm that up and finish off what, uh, what the permit will look like and what the policy will be for that. Because Little, Little League is, um, looking to do that with this, this, this year, so that's what they're working hard to get to. Um, there will be a special meeting between Park and Rec, EDC, and, uh, Youth Services on next Monday as well to, to take a look at the seasonal events that they're talking about, you know, as, as, it's good because they're now working more in, as a group as opposed to, you know, it adds, uh, you know, obviously certain more people working on events makes it easier to make the events successful and you have enough resources to do them. So they're meeting on Monday. And the last thing for Park and Rec, um, they did discuss, they did put the Easter egg hunt on, on April first and rain dates April second. So that's that. So when we look at water and sewer, uh, obviously you talked about GZA, which they had talked about. The other thing to, to note with regards to water sewers that, um, with our MDC contract each year, they've, you know, final, finished the year out and we were two and a half million gallons above. And that's largely because we had to use the well, uh, use MDC water, uh, for part of the time because of the drought causing our well, town well to go down low. So, um, there was that impact and I think they, if I recall, they talked about it being about a thirteen thousand dollar cost. Well, which, which, you know, but the challenge of trying to hit it dead on for forty-six million, I think it's, whatever it is, um, hundred, maybe it's a hundred forty-six million gallons, um, to come within that, that's a very good, good effort, so. That's that. They did do a water repair, a water, a li- line repair on Main Street. Um, and they had a challenge by the fact that it went from valve to valve and valve to valve failed. But, uh, they were to repair, able to repair that. They, uh, have a purchase order out for clarifier tanks to go for the, uh, septic system. I mean, our s- our sewer system. And the RFQ's deadline for the work for, for water at, on, well, water and sewer projects that they're, that we have for Russell and Co. Avenue, uh, the deadline is actually today.
Yep, uh, Tom and, and Ryan O'Hellpin were going through the bids when I left them around six o'clock this evening, so.
And the last item is, uh, last group is, uh, EDC. And with regards to EDC, um, a couple of things. They are, uh, you know, they had put together a survey where they could ask some, you know, small list of questions they could ask the businesses in town. And also they're trying to work hard to collect the most current, um, information in terms of getting in contact with the bill, businesses. Um, so they're looking to get the Chamber of Commerce to send that out for us. It's, uh, our list right now is a little outdated, so they're trying to get it up to date and obviously get some feedback from the businesses. And, uh, along the same line, they are, um, they are looking to start the Business of the Quarter and Business of the Year program up again. So they've been working out the details of how they're going to do that. So that should start very soon. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Ralph.
Ryan, quick question, um, when I'm talking about the weather.
Yep.
Do you have any update on the status of the track?
I don't. So the last update I have on the track was, I want to say about a month ago, when, um, right now the, uh, bid is getting written by, um, forget the company that we hired to, uh, to do the work. And they, according to our contract with the state under grant, we have to, we, we should be selecting a contractor by March fifteenth. And so, um, with that, we need to go out to bid. And my hope is that we go out to bid in early February so we can, um, so that we can award that bid by, uh, mid-March. And that's the timeline. Uh, once, so right now we're waiting on them to finish the, to finalize the bid. They were out doing, uh, test pourings probably two, two, three weeks ago at the, at the high school. So they're working on it right now. SLR, SLR is the, uh, company doing the work. And, um, once they finish writing that bid, uh, we'll get that out and then, um, we'll be able to award that contractor. Uh, I'm, I'm eagerly waiting on that too. Uh, right now it's just with them. And, um, I can ask Bob Schaefer an update, you know, on that as well.
Yeah, just, you know, hoping that we can get this moving quick for the kids.
Yeah, no, I'm a hundred percent with you there. Yeah, thank you. And I'm hoping that, uh, we won't know until we get those bids in with time tape, timelines and whatnot. But, but the hope is that, you know, in March, awarding in March will, will line us up for the summer.
For summer repair.
Exactly, yeah. So we're still looking for, uh, an early fall, uh, completion.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, I just have one question. I was reading the minutes about the water and sewer meeting. And the biggest thing that stuck out to me was, uh, the twenty-year upgrade to the sewer plant. That was last done twenty-three years ago.
And how much is it going to be now?
They estimate if it was done this year, it's twenty-five million dollars.
Yeah.
So.
I missed, I quoted and they were just finishing that discussion, that's why I didn't share it because I didn't know what it was.
The, the thing that scared me is East Hampton shut down half their plant this year because it wasn't cleaning water the way it was supposed to be. And I don't know what that ended up costing them, but they stopped septic trucks coming in and dumping. So they lost income there and whatever the repair costs were. So that's something we have to start looking at, I guess.
Yeah, and I think with, at the end, when I walked in and they were finishing up that conversation, they did, you know, refer to the fact that we have been diligent in the last few years in doing a number of, um, upgrades or repairs to keep the system running. So, but yeah, obviously that is a very large number for trying to do a, to do a.
It scares me too when they call it a twenty-year upgrade and our last upgrade was twenty-three years ago. So we're getting past the point where, you know, we might start seeing things fail before we can replace them.
We are doing some, so, as Ralph said, that we are doing some work. We're, we're replacing the clarifiers that's in the works right now. And, um, and so, but you're right. I mean, that's a, that's a big thing and, and we need to look at that, um, certainly.
Do we take, uh, septic?
No, we don't. Not, not anymore.
We wouldn't be able to until at least Brainer Place goes on because they don't have enough water flow.
Okay. All right, well, we'll move on to public comment. There's another, you know, there's a general informal discussion.
Yeah, it'll be there soon.
Okay.
Give us time.
All right.
Ryan, I, I mean, if, if Christie Fuller on, if she's not on, I'll.
No, no, Shelley Nolan.
Oh, Shelley, sorry. Shelley Nolan, if she's on, I'll let her speak for, uh, solidarity.
But if she's not on, I will speak. Okay. Shelley's with us, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Then I'll let her speak.
I see Shelley. So, um, Shelley's with the Committee on Solidarity, um, thank, and she's joining us, uh, via Zoom this evening. Hi Shelley, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing?
Wonderful. So I will be, um, brief in essence of time. Thank you for, um, inviting me to share, um, on the work that we are doing on the Committee on Solidarity. Um, there was a number, uh, the, the last meeting was held on one ten twenty-three. Um, and we did have, uh, representatives from the community, um, present, uh, who spoke during the public comment section. They had some specific questions about the survey that was conducted, which comes up to, um, disseminate and discuss that survey with the new membership to give them an opportunity to review it. And we'll be reevaluating, um, next steps moving forward once everyone has had a chance to do that. Um, we also continue to discuss updating the community resource pamphlet, which, um, will be occurring at our next meeting. Um, folks are going to be reviewing, um, the different information that's on there and updating as of the grid. And then we also reviewed the list of events from twenty twenty-two, um, and are working to develop our event plan for twenty twenty-three. Um, and we also discussed opportunities to collaborate with other, um, town departments as well as other community groups to sort of, uh, share the wealth on some of the great events that happened last year, um, to try to partner together. We also talked about potentially partnering, um, with Middletown over the bridge on their larger LGBT event as opposed to doing a separate Friday event in the Portland community. Um, but that's sort of still up for discussion. So those are really the only updates that I have. We will be meeting again next month. Um, and we also did delegate, uh, representative from the committee to come to present to you all, um, uh, on a consistent basis. So that, that's going through, um, June.
Thank you, Shelley. And thank you, uh, to all, all of, uh, the committee members on the Committee on Solid- Solidarity. You guys, you guys have a lot of work that you guys do, I know. Any questions for Shelley?
Thank you, Shelley.
All right, thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
You too.
All right, and any, um, public comment in the audience this evening? I think we cleared everyone out. Um, and I don't, nothing in the chat? All right, so we'll move on, uh, to item eleven, which is Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. Is there anything that anyone has?
Bobby? I have a question.
Sean, yes?
The tr- transfer station down on the Bridge Antonutia, whatever they're building, the new transfer, do you know when that's going to be applicable?
Uh, soon. We're looking forward to it, but it's not yet. I keep asking.
Because I know, I see them doing a lot of the rail work because they took over the lease on the rail system.
I keep asking, uh, uh, Dan Beret, uh, for, for updates as well. I know they're, they're working on it, they're, they're, you know, but I have not heard a completion date yet. I will let you know as soon as I hear though, because I'm, I'm looking forward to that as well.
Okay. RFP on Brownstone?
Yeah, the R, so the RFP on Brownstone Ave is, is not going to go out until the remediation work has been completed, for one, this phase. Because, and it, as, as we've talked, as I've talked about this with, um, with tie and bond as well, in order to put the RFP together, we want to specifically state what's been done and what has accom- has been accomplished. And right now, um, good news with that site is that as they took away all that contaminated soil, they have to weigh that because we have to pay for that contaminated soil that, that they take on. And, uh, the good news is it came in, uh, underweight, uh, under what we had budgeted. So there's some savings in the project right now there. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to see how much savings that we have left. And then we're going to use that to continue remediating the property. So until we get that farther along, we don't really know what to put in the RFP. Because there's still, there's, there's a couple of tanks still that we want to get out of there. Uh, and we got to make sure we have the funding to do that. So, um, right now we're kind of in a wait and see, uh, on that. But that's where we're at.
Are they just like, uh, heating oil tanks that were there for the buildings or are they bigger than that?
No, they're like heating oil. They're smaller tanks, yeah, that, um, that they, one of them was not identified when they did the sonar penetrating and, and they actually like hit the top of it when they were clearing out because it was buried. And it looks like somebody just buried, uh, an external tank. It got buried.
No, no. No one would ever do that.
Yeah, I was just as surprised, Sean. But, uh, but yeah, so, uh, so we're hoping that we can get the funding to, to make sure that gets out as well.
All right.
But yeah, it's, we're working on it.
Okay, I think that's it for me.
All right.
Bobby, Mike, maybe?
I got nothing tonight. I'm good.
Down that side.
Ask my track question. I, I'm good.
Alright, alright. Mike?
Nope, good to go.
Alright, uh, under follow-up items, we have any, do you want to mention anything about the charter? I, I did send the Selectmen, for the record, I sent the, send you guys the, uh, the state statutes on the charter, as well as, uh, some sections of our own charter that, uh, are relevant. So, uh, at this point, I don't, I, I think the, I think we'll hold off on any charter talk probably until, uh, maybe the fall, I'm thinking, if that works for everyone. And, and, uh, what I was thinking is if we can get a commission together, maybe after the next election, you know, right away in December, November, we can try to have something ready for, uh, the twenty twenty-four ballot. I think that would be a good time to put a charter question on or referendum questions, uh, during that election, because so many people come out and vote. Chances are, we'll have the vote on the, uh, school, uh, facilities as well at that election. So, um, you know, it, we could probably get a lot done then.
In reading the statute that you sent out, a couple of things jumped out at me. First, the, you know, the number of bodies and, and the requirements for who that body will be. It might take some, some work to find the right mix. So, we need, I think we as a group need to discuss that first. And then also, in section B of seventeen dash one ninety, it talked about, um, what we can make, as I think Bobby, as you brought up, or Sean, it was you, about we can make recommendations of some things that, ideas that you all have. I think it would behoove us to have that conversation and really, and talk amongst ourselves what we're looking for and figure out how we want to approach this. So, maybe if we start, you know, thinking, you're, you're talking fall time, once we get through the meat of what we got with budget and everything else, it would be good to have, dedicate some real serious time to this discussion.
Yeah, you're spot on, John, yeah. No, I, I agree. And we gotta be very careful, and, and we, we all should come with what we'd like to see and, uh, and recommend.
Because there's an awful lot there, you know, and, and I've been on a number of committees over the years, mostly with statute, because that's what I dealt with in my other job. But, it's very easy to get lost in that stuff and have everybody picking out these little changes I'm making, you can never get anything accomplished. So, I think the more we lay the groundwork for the committee, yeah, I think we'll, we'll be less apt to get stuck in that quandary.
Right. And also, I know Ralph and I spoke on this, too, and, you know, I think both parties have, it's not the easiest time to find volunteers for, for, uh, any boards and commissions. And certainly, something as important as a charter revision, uh, committee, you would want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and we can, we can find, you know, great volunteers to serve on this as well. Because I don't know how easy that's gonna be, either.
No, and there, there are people that have been on before, and they either, if it was a good experience, you may get them back. And if it wasn't, they may not want to see you coming.
Exactly.
But, uh, no, I, I think we just need to put our time in. The more work we do in the beginning, I think it's gonna benefit us down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one thing to, um, to keep in mind, because I know we were talking about, you know, could we aggressively attack and make this year? But, one of the things you have to realize is, if you're gonna put something on the ballot, like I know when we had the bond referendum question, and I'm assuming when the school comes along, it'll be on there, is that you have to have that signed appro- you know, approved for the end of August, so that it has the amount of time to make the ballot.
Right.
So, you, you, on top of, you already lose a couple of months of what you could be doing in that timeframe. So, that's just something to be aware of. When, when this comes along, or the school, when they were talking about a school question, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna have to be done in Aug- for August, so that it's ready to make it for, uh, November.
Alright, well, with that, is there a?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second that motion.
Alright, thank you, Sean and John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.